Good evening, welcome to the April 14th, 2015 meeting of the Manchester Town Council. I'll open with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, first order of business, approval of the March 10th minutes. Copy sent out electronically earlier, and you also have a hard copy, should be in your packet in front of you. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
I make a motion to approve the March 10th minutes, March 10th, yes, check register.
You mean the minutes or checks?
Minutes, the minutes, excuse me.
I'll second that motion.
The motion is second. All who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next, we have March 2015 check register. We do not have the treasurer's report yet, I expect that we'll have that in May, but we do have the check register in detailed form. Again, you do have it electronically, everybody should now have a paper copy if you need an additional minute to look it over. If there are no additions or corrections, if we don't need extra time, take a motion to receive.
I'll make a motion that we approve the March 2015 check register.
Received, by the way, you okay with received?
Received.
The receipt?
It's not all, it's just.
We'll approve, we'll receive it. I'll second the motion.
Motion is second to receive. All who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, mayor's report, a couple of items here, we're finally on to spring, hopefully all the, knock on wood, weather-related winter items are behind us. One last time, I would like to commend Steve, his crew, the rest of the town crew, we had a lot of overnight episodes this year, it seemed like, a lot of things going on between 10:00 a.m. and 6:00 a.m. Each and every time, the guys stepped up to the call of duty, and I think everybody who moves into our town would agree that our town streets tend to be at the top of class, certainly in this county and anyplace that I've seen. So, everybody out there, if you can, if you see the guys, definitely extend your gratitude, and Steve, you could pass it to the guys from this group.
I'll do that, yes.
Last night, we had a good event in town, Commissioner Wance had a community voices forum, something new with this group, it was well-attended, Commissioner, my mind, yeah, Commissioner Dick Weaver from down the road, Brian D. Leonardo, the state's attorney, several members of the Carroll County Sheriff's Department, along with our police department, town administrator Steve Miller, along with others, were there. It was really a good event where the community was able to ask questions, get answers, so that was, that was a good event. He says he's gonna have more of those in the future, so I'd encourage those out there in the community to attend. Just a reminder, water bills are due April 30th, so they're out there now, everybody should have theirs, if you don't have yours, please stop in or contact the town office. May 19th, we have a town erection, so nominations are now closed, so we do have candidates out there, we will have a candidate forum here Monday, April 27th, correcting how long on the date, is that the correct date?
That's correct.
It's the Monday, right.
Correct, yes.
So that will be televised, and you can attend in person. Two more items, scholarship, we have the Charlotte Collect Scholarship, is out there right now, that's eligible for anybody, does zip code Kelly, or just in town? I'm gonna put you on the spot.
It is the zip code.
Zip code.
I think preference to town residents, so.
Okay. So that is due May 1st. Bulk trash pickup is tomorrow, it's not too late, to get your items down there for bulk trash for tomorrow, please call Hughes if you can, let them know what you have down there, that you do have something down there. And then finally, this is really a kudos to everybody in town, this started, I believe, last Friday or the Friday before, but we now have brush pickup in town, so that'll last for approximately six months, and that's something that we were able to add, negotiate into our, our new trash removal contract with Hughes, where our recycling percentage went up approximately 68 percent, the volume of items recycled over the last couple of years. So as we've put out more recycled items and less trash, we were able to add in bulk trash pickup for approximately six months of the year, at no additional cost to the residents. So, again, those items have to be either down there, by the road, nothing bigger than four inches, I believe, in depth, four feet in length.
Diameter, right.
Hughes doesn't want things in plastic bags, so either put it down Thursday night, very early Friday morning, it can be in a bin, but not in a plastic bag. Am I missing anything on that that you guys are aware of?
That should be it, that covers it.
So that's what I have, so move to town administrator's report.
Okay, good evening, mayor and council, we'll go ahead and start with the March 2015 administrative report, there's been no change in the S.H.A. projects, I did bring your, to your attention last month's meeting about House Bill 920, in regards to having S.H.A. relocate water and sewer, in regards to any part of the project being paid for by state or federal funds, that did receive an unfavorable report by the House Environmental Transportation Committee, so that's probably not fair. The Sheets project, we've been in contact with Sheets, they're in the process of setting up a meeting with the mayor and the council and staff in regards to moving forward with their new building. The town hall and police station, the new building, the project goes to Planning and Zoning Board next Tuesday, April 21st, for concept approval. It still appears that we're gonna be able to get the specs out on the street for bid by the end of this month, the end of April, so that's moving forward. You have in front of you the code enforcement status report for the month, under grants, our grant person, Jared Schumacher, has found a possible grant for recycling containers, and staff and Jared, we're researching this, so hopefully we can go, go with that, so we're looking into that. Under miscellaneous items, Kelly and I met with the new representatives from Freedom Wireless on March the 4th, for those that you don't know, don't know this, Freedom Wireless is an internet provider, who rents space on the Manchester Baptist Church tank north of town. I attended the monthly WRCC meeting on March the 25th, and as Mayor Warner stated, the candidate forum is scheduled for April the 27th, the council candidate forum will be at 7:00 p.m. with the mayor forum at 8:00 p.m. Moving right along, we'll go into the March 2015 Public Works Report, you have in front of you the monthly water and wastewater status report for March of 2015, you will see on that status report, the average gallons of water pumped per day, what was happening was, the ground was thawing out, everything was moving, we experienced, I believe, five leaks, four service line leaks, and one water main break, so that gave us some problems once the frost started coming out of the ground. So we're back to normal conditions now, knock on wood, and everything's doing very well for us right now. We're gonna have a insurance services office evaluation to take place in May, and council person Smith's probably familiar with this, every five years, the insurance offices come in, we do flow tests on our hydrants, and basically that's how your homeowner's insurance is rated, through that I.S.O. study, so that's gonna take place in May. Under wastewater, the contract has been signed with Amline or East for the pipe relining project, the anticipated start date will probably be, I have April 20th or 27th, we're looking now probably at the 27th, where they're gonna begin their process. Our crane, both cranes have been upgraded, and the certification took place on March 17th, and we switched over to spray irrigation on March the 18th. Under stormwater, the Route 27 Stormwater Management Facility is moving forward, I do need some direction on relocating the skate park, recommendation to staff is to relocate the skate park to Water Street, over the next month or so, I would like some direction from the mayor and the council on that, so we can actually be ahead of the game on that project. Boy Scout Reed Latterer, in earning his Eagle Scout project, will be doing some stenciling of the storm drain inlets in the Manchester Farms area, as I state there, once Reed has confirmed a date or dates, we'll be getting the information out to the residents in that area. So Reed, as I say, earning his Eagle Scout project, him and the scouts are gonna come in and do some, do some stenciling for us, which is a plus, really appreciate that. Under maintenance roads and parks, we experienced four ice and snow events in March, we have bids on each street rehabilitation projects, and they should be out over the next several weeks, those bids will be due back May the 11th, and you have in front of you, which is an action item, replacement mower bid. We received three bids back for a zero-turn mower, we received one from Baltimore Turf Equipment for $9,947.22, received one back from Works Farm Equipment for $10,700, we received one from Dave's Tractor World at $10,999, with staff recommendation to go with Baltimore Turf Equipment at $9,947.22. As you can see in the bottom, our budgeted figure was $14,000 for that one, that is an action item.
Steve, really, all standard, so there's no difference, their bids are for the identical model?
Identical, yes. Yes, sir.
So we have a separate line item on the agenda for this, if it's okay with everybody, we're talking about it now, we can go ahead and handle this now, if it's okay with the Any additional questions for Steve or staff on tractor bid?
No warranty differences?
No, everything exactly is the same, yes.
Any experience with Baltimore Turf Equipment as far as their support, their service, their...
Never, never dealt with them, actually, we've dealt with Works Farm Equipment, but never with Baltimore Turf Equipment, nope.
I'll make a motion that we accept a bid from Baltimore Turf Equipment for the amount of $9,947.22.
I'll second it.
Motion is second, any other comments? All who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Okay, any other questions for me?
Steve, the skate park recommendations, would be too much trouble to put together a little simple map of Manchester, and just show on a map just the locations, might be easier to kinda get a feel for.
I can do that, sure, I can do a Google map, and if, if any of you get a chance, as you go down Water Street, and you would make the right into the brush dump area, there's a level spot off to your left, which it would fit very nice right there. And staff and I had talked about that, and we don't feel that it's necessary to do a fence, as we did off of Route 27, I think just a nice blacktop pad, probably four inches thick, would be sufficient. The current, the current park is 60 by 90, we wouldn't reduce that down, our biggest issue is gonna be if we can move some of those ramps up, which they're in pretty bad shape, so we may have to look into purchasing.
Are they gonna allow parking in that area as well?
Yes, we could, we could do something with some millings to put some parking in down there, usually what we've taken notice is our current skate park, we normally don't get any more than maybe five vehicles at a time, so there's ample parking down there.
Is this gonna have any impact on our concerns with the illegal dumping that is going on in the past back there?
Cannot see that happening, none at all, no, what we'd have to do is, is actually relocate the, the gate or the cable.
So that's part of the plan.
Right, exactly, and we can, we can do that very easily, we can use some, some fencing material, and, you know, create a barrier for people going back in there, yes.
I think we're hopeful too, that having brush pickup on Fridays will help reduce some of the traffic going to the brush dump, now, of course, if they're gonna dump car batteries, you know, if they're gonna dump them anywhere.
Right.
Yeah, we've been pretty lucky with that over the last several years, knock on wood, every, sometimes we do, we do happen to get some trash back there, but nothing like we used to.
It may actually work out better if we have people back there at the skate park, you may not, you know, people may not come back there as much as you do.
Right, it's just, it's very quiet back there, nobody's back there, sneak in, dump the trash, and take off, yeah, good point.
The only thing I can see with the parking is, there are times during the summer where BGE has a lot of trucks back there.
BGE, actually, when they have a big job, we, we work it out with their subcontractors, so we may have to find, we, we could relocate them to another spot, now, the last group that was in, we actually stored some holes near our York Street water tank area, so it wasn't too bad, but it depends on, you know, the number of trucks, and I think we could probably work with them on that.
Yeah, I don't think it's a hurdle we can't cross.
Correct, yes.
I like that location.
Anything else?
Can I just, what's, what's your timeline on the whole skate park?
If I'm not mistaken, it appears that the Stormwater Management Facility, if everything falls into play, may go out on bid spring of 2016, so, summer of next year, construction could start on that, pending the contribution from state highways, and so on and so forth, so that all has to come together for the county, and we're very hopeful that it will, our county, the county staff that's been assisting us feel very comfortable about that, so.
As far as building out this new one, can you do that as soon as possible, and then...
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, correct.
If we did get caught, you know, in a pinch time-wise, what's the, you know, the timeframe or the window you would need to construct it and move everything over there?
It wouldn't, I've already got, started getting some preliminary prices back for the blacktop pad, again, the question comes up in regards to moving the ramps, and are they gonna, you know, that, that's gonna be a little tricky, how are we gonna get them there, even if, even if they'll make it there, I mean, those ramps have almost 20 years of service on them, so at that point, we would have to take a hard look and say, how are we gonna fund some new ramps, and we may look into a, into our parks, parks fund.
Right.
To fund, fund those ramps, so, yes.
And a grant, a grant.
I reached out, actually, council personnel, I reached out to POS, because that's who initially funded our skate park off of 27, and I could apply for something like that, but that would be about two years down the route, so we would see money for that.
It did take a long time the first time.
It did, it does, the initial run-through takes a while, yes.
Was there other grant avenues, other than that?
We may be able to look into that, I could get the Schumachers to look into that for us, sure.
Okay.
Yes.
Anything else? All right, move on to police report.
Sir, good evening, everybody, police department handled 54 calls for service, we only had one Part 1 crime this month, that involved a theft, and the theft involved feral cats, it was a little incident we had to take care of, one person was criminally charged, I had a conversation with both parties, our officers engaged them, so hopefully we can resolve that issue. I have seen less cats, so I don't know how far that's gonna go, or how far it's gonna last, but hopefully it quiets down a little bit.
You haven't found any unmarked graves, have you?
No, absolutely not, absolutely not. The other, we did have an incident involved a minor assault, or two arrests were made, traffic enforcement involved southwestern crossroads overlook, and Augusta and Friday or 93 traffic stops were conducted, 29 state citations, 64 warnings, we are having an issue in the morning with the officers getting out of training, I'm gonna start to juggle the schedules a little bit, so we can have a little bit more focus there. A lot of people that cut through Whispering Valley and crossroads, they're ticked off that we don't have a bypass, I heard that complaint more than anything else, so they're all hot that we don't have a bypass, and they're backed up by 15 minutes to an hour, and that's why they cut through, but they did get citations, Mark, I don't know if it slowed down, you're my best source there.
Uh, yeah, nice.
It has?
Yes.
All right, good.
Mainly it was the bus, the people waiting on the bus that were complaining to me.
Oh, really? Okay.
Kids, 'cause it's 7:30 to 8:30 crowd.
So normally, they'll see the car, and if they see our car, they'll go all the way down, down to Bachman, and then cut, cut up through, and come out, then we were hitting them at the four-way, on crossroad overlook, Bachman, Westminster Street, and then also Keating Court and Westminster Street. We paid a cut, it was a couple mornings we hit them pretty good, so hopefully it slows down, and once we get everybody out of training, we'll, we'll change some hours and hit it a little bit more frequently. I know it's March, and, well, before I go into that, the same time last year, from January to March, we had 10 Part 1 crimes, it consisted, we were getting hit with burglaries, we were getting hit with thefts, and some other issues, and the same period this year, we only had two. So we're continuing our decrease, and a lot of that is the community, I mean, if something's going on in the neighborhood, they're letting the officers know, and the officers are engaging the element, and I think it's working, so we're gonna keep that up. I just, I'm a big believer with that, like Commissioner Wance said, and the Colonel from the sheriff, and I condone it, the best source is the community, if the community's talking to us, it helps us out. I've always said, the best detective has the best snitch, and that's just how it works. So, but just give us the information.
And you're saying that's Mark?
What's that?
And you're saying that's Mark?
Any other game?
I think you just named Mark.
No, 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 Mark is not, he's a community member who is concerned.
And let's give us your address.
Blackout now.
And your addresses.
No, his was strictly trash. But unfortunately, going into the month of April, unfortunately, we've had five heroin arrests already, and, and two incidents were impaired driving, and they were coming from Baltimore and going to Pennsylvania, wasn't it, Ron? P.A., actually, one of the, because of our involvement in stopping it, Ron and Zed probably saved a girl's arm. When, when they stopped the car, they had the heroin, we had arrest, but they immediately noticed, noticed infection in the girl's arm, and so they skipped the arrest, took her over to the hospital, and thank God they did, because she was gonna lose her arm, and it was all over a dirty needle.
Skin flapping.
Yes, yeah, it was pretty, Ron described it, it was pretty horrific, so, but unfortunately, we do have five arrests already, Ken Meekins and I have been talking, probably May 1, we're gonna up the ante a little bit with the sheriff's office, he's got two special teams brewing, and we're just gonna try to stay focused on a straightaway approach, coming out of Baltimore up through the two towns and into Pennsylvania, just to, to let them know we're there, you know, and just keep that pressure. We do have two young men that we identified in the area, we got more investigations continuing, the one gentleman's in York County, Pennsylvania, he's on additional charges, once he clears there and comes down, he'll have to deal with us in Maryland, so, but we are gonna keep that pressure up. April 20th, Sheriff DeWes asked me to coordinate drug training, not just for Manchester, for the county, so we have two of our officers going, every municipality is gonna be sending an officer, the sheriff's department's gonna send in officers, and I think it's 20, 25 total, Maryland State Police, we're gonna see how this first part of the training goes with the DEA, and then we'll continue additional training, we want them educated. Outside of that, everything is pretty, pretty quiet, which is good.
So chief, with respect to that training, we're helping to coordinate the training for those departments?
Yes, I'm working right, I'm working with my old partners in DEA, and they're actually gonna put the training on.
Excellent. To piggyback on, to what you said, and I wanna give you and our, our department kudos, a couple of weeks ago, there was an article in the Carroll County Times, there was a very significant arrest in the heroin trafficking circles, dealer known as quote-unquote Park Heights Streets, that, you know, our department was very instrumental in bringing down, getting off the street. In addition to the article out there, and, and my thanks, and I'm sure the thanks of everybody here in town, we received an email from somebody in Eldersburg congratulating the chief, our department, for their work and their cooperation with sheriff's department, FBI, DEA, so, good job, keep up the good work, and keep leading the charge on that.
Thank you, the guys did a good job.
I'd like to commend you as well, last night, a citizen made a comment thanking the recently elected officials for actually keeping their campaign promises, not that you were chosen by election, but you made a promise, that if you got that position, that you would open communicate, lines of communication with all the other area, local law enforcement, and you've done that, and you've done a great job.
Thank you, sir, I'll continue.
Anything else for the chief? Okay, moving on, we have an update, we have Principal Dr. Ken Fisher, who joined us last spring to give us an update on, on things they had in the works, and he's back as promised to give us an update on Manchester Vada High School.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council people, I'm sure we call council people for having me, I'm glad to be back, it's my second year in Manchester Valley, and I'm happy to report that we're making positive progress on our academic, athletic, and our musicals, and I wanted to share some of that with you just briefly. In the years since I've been there, we've improved the AP seats, the total number of kids sitting in an AP class by 223, from two years ago to this year. We've increased from last year to the 2015 time right now, by 100 more students taking an advanced placement test. We've increased in our 11th grade juniors, we've targeted this group to have more students take advanced placement language and composition, which is probably the most important course for college-bound or post-secondary bound students, from 50 in 2013 and 14 to 165, many of which are first-time takers, and I'm happy to report, because of our hard work and supports we've put in place, not one of those students has dropped the class because of academic difficulty. We've added a freshman program for advanced placement government, which is married to our English course and our freshman seminar course, and we've introduced AP human geography for the first time, which is designed for first-time 11th and 12th grade AP test takers. Now, this is impressive, but I also like to report that we have maintained and increased in our honors program by over 253 students, so as you can imagine, we've moved honor students up into advanced placement, but we've also moved academic-level students up to our honors program, and again, we're not seeing a floodgates of students dropping, our, our school is filled with students of high academic potential, but they've been yearning for teachers and counselors to tell them, you can do it, and step up, so we're not seeing a whole lot of additional stress, we're not seeing panic, we're emphasizing support, but I believe our student has some untapped potential to increase their abilities academically and get further, once they leave us in whatever it is they choose to do. But we're also improving with our SATs, this past year, 2014, because of the hard work of our faculty and staff, our critical reading, math, and writing scores are once again over the state average, but are the highest in school history, since the school's inception. Moving on to our chorus, orchestra, and band, I'm happy to report, with county adjudication, our orchestra for the first time has received a superior rating, and will be competing at the state level, the state, it's their version of a state championship. Both of our chorus groups, the vocal ensemble and festival chorus, have used Level 4 music, there are five levels, Level 4 is the second highest-tiered music, and they also repeat, receive superior ratings. Our band was just so close, they're using higher-level music, and they were like one point away from superior rating, but they received an excellent rating, so we're celebrating them with some really good pizza party that's gonna come up for them. We have, our play is about to commence this weekend and next weekend, the St. Adams Family, it's a cleverly-written, very entertaining, wonderfully put-together act, and we've got an upgraded sound system that you should probably enjoy in a live band this year, those are both improvements from last year. Couple things on athletics, we recently won, the girls indoor state track championship, that's a group of 16 girls, with some individual winners, Nate Gill, one of our boys, indoor track, is the state high jump champion again, our girls soccer, won the first-ever county championship, and their third-time repeat, won a South Regional title, four athletes placed at the state wrestling tournament, Logan Garland received second, Jimmy Guarico got third, and our boys basketball team, for the second year at the road, made it to the regional finals, they're sectional champions, but they did not win the regional final, but we're gonna get there, we may be rebuilding here, but we're gonna get there in basketball. I guess I share these things with you to let you know that we have a tremendous community, our youth are just doing fantastic, you know Natalie, we've got a lot of Nattalies, they're excellent, and we are working to move ahead, if we do the same thing, we're gonna get the same results. I believe the enemy of good, of great is good, I don't ever feel that we can be satisfied with the success of our youngsters, we wanna support and make sure they have fun, but we also need to compete against people that they don't even see, all across the country, and right now, all across the world. Very happy, though, to be supported this year by an outstanding group of people, that's our advisory council, and I'd like to extend the invitation to everyone on TV, everyone in the audience, and of course, all of you to join us, we meet on the third Monday of the month, it will be April 20th for this month, and we suspend our meetings over the summer, but we will be meeting to develop goals to support things like this, and taking it to the next level. If I thought I could do this all myself, we wouldn't have a group, so the group is very important, we've spent a half a year forming our charter, we're working under the Carroll Foundation, the mayor has been an active and instrumental member, we appreciate that, Mr. Miller has been there, and I got an idea for your skate park, maybe our protective help, say, help us, Mr. City.
Very good, good idea, yeah.
Chief Hess has been outstanding, his officers have been supportive, we've also seen... We've also seen a downtick of serious offenses in our school and I've seen an increase in presence since you've been there with the officers coming through. I feel like a lot of us know them by first-name basis. They've been great. They'll come hang out. We offer them coffee and humor from me, but they help keep our school safe. I have Chief Hess's phone number and we text whenever anything suspicious is going on and I'm very pleased. I've worked with a lot of local police chiefs. Chief Meekins is great, but I have to say that Chief Hess has been really the most instrumental chief that I've worked with in our school, so I appreciate him. All in all, I couldn't be at a better school and a better community. Very happy to be here. I know there's some interest on our ag program. I want to let you guys know we have plans to support that next year regardless of any budget scenario. I've been given special permission to work out a change in staffing, which is unprecedented, which I think shows commitment from our school board that we do want to keep ag, which is so important to our heritage and to our community. Want to keep that alive. But with that being said, we can use the council, the advisory councils help and this council's help in promoting the program and getting more students involved. We only have twenty-eight students involved next year. Our enrollment is dropping by fifty. I do anticipate staff reductions in any scenario because when we lose students, we would expect to lose staff. When we gain students, we'd expect to gain staff. The trick is how to be a small school and offer all of our course offerings. So we partner with North Carroll High School and we move some kids back and forth and that's good. But in the long term, I think it would be nice if we could have more kids, so please, town members, keep having kids so we can increase. I think it's good for everyone. So I didn't know if you all had any questions for me about the report, but I just appreciate you hearing from me. I hope to come back whenever you need me, but at least on a yearly basis to give you some good news and let you know the challenges and how we're working hard on those.
Well, I want to congratulate you. If you remember last spring, we spoke at your office and you knew the challenges ahead of you and I said, "Hang in there, it's going to work out." And because of your strong work ethic and passion, it is working out, so congratulations.
Thanks. I can tell you the second year's a lot better than the first.
This is exciting. I work in Howard County, so I'm getting tired of hearing Howard and Montgomery County brag about their school systems. Now, we've got some bragging rights and it's exciting.
Absolutely. We need to do more of it because the whole town, the whole community, the whole state needs to know that we're the gem. I think, I think you're going to hear a lot more about our programs in the future. I think you are going to be proud to send your kids to our school.
Very good. I've heard nothing but good things I have to say, so it makes me happy.
That's good. You're talking to the right people.
So did I hear too, in addition to some of the past athletic things, and I don't, I have one going to school now with Dr. Fisher and a couple more on the way, but the girls lacrosse program's in the top four or five in the country regardless of size, public or private?
I just heard today that we're ranked first in the state and we're ranked fourth in the nation. It's an independent group. I know that they're incredible kids and they're well-coached and they work really hard and I know we want to beat North Carroll. So I'm confident we're going to do well. Nothing's in the bag, of course, we need to work hard, but the kids, the girls lacrosse team's special. They have a really nice work ethic. They are a very good cohesive team. They work really hard and great things happen. And last spring, after I spoke with you, we had won three championships with a group of about seven girls, seventy girls. We won the outdoor track and field, the softball, and the girls lacrosse. My only question is, what are the boys doing? I would ask Mr. Miller maybe to put some growth hormone.
You gotta bulk them up a little bit.
Our basketball team's doing well, wrestling did well, and our football team did make it to the playoffs and not everyone goes. So we've had success, but the boys, we tease them all the time, but you know, at Manchester Valley, we all know the women are ruling athletics.
It's a maturity level. The boys will catch up.
The boys will catch up. We've got some work to do, but very proud of what our kids and staff have accomplished.
Yep. Good job.
Okay, we'll keep up the good work. Invitation's always open to you here if you have things you'd like to present to the community. Look forward to continuing to work with the, on the advisory council and see what we can't do.
Thanks a lot. Thanks for having me.
Thank you.
Next order of business, introduction of ordinance two-twenty. This ordinance introduces the tax rate for fiscal year 2016. It is not the introduction of, or the approval of the former budget, but it does set the tax rate. So Kelly, correct me if I'm wrong on any of the facts here, but we introduce this tonight and we will vote on it next month, which will set the tax rate, at which time we'll also get into some of the nuts and bolts of the budget. For any community members that are interested, we do have a draft budget that is out there. It continues to be a work in progress and will be up until the point where it's completed and done. If you're familiar with any of the state politics, know that the budget and exactly what goes down is something that can go down to the wire. But in any case, the tax rate will be introduced tonight. It is a tax rate that is the same, which is twenty-one point six cents on every one-hundred dollars of assessed value. I think it is important to note that this is the second lowest tax rate in the county for any municipality that has a police department. So the only one that is lower is Hampstead and if you're familiar with Hampstead, they have a substantial amount of industrial and commercial properties that we enjoy here for a number of reasons, primarily because the county handles their sewer. So they're able to expand up the road towards us because they, you know, their sewer rolls into the county. So, any other comments on the budget or, I'm sorry, on the, on the tax rate? So we'll introduce the tax rate. We have a motion.
You want a motion?
I'm sorry, we're just introducing. I'm getting off to. I would do a motion though. Okay, so we'll move on. One final point on that, I would like to thank the town staff, anybody on this board. There's a large number of, you know, meetings and work behind the scenes that goes into this. The people in this room and people that are not in this room work very hard to keep the tax rate as low as possible and operate on a, you know, as tight of margins as we can in order to keep that tax rate very low and it's something that we're really proud of here in town. And it should be noted, this is the fourth consecutive year, this will be the fourth budget in a row with no property tax increase. All right, we'll go to questions and comments from the community. If anybody signed up or maybe anyone that did not sign up would like to speak. Do you mind if we come up to the mic that way? There's literally, there's tens of people that watch it on. In that way, they know who you are.
My name is Helen Wagner and I'm a resident of the Halle Hill Farms community. And I attended the meeting, your meeting, a couple of months ago. And when I did, there was a drawing on a board back here by Dean Kamlin, architect, for a building for like a community center or something.
For the new town hall.
And I was wondering what had happened to that? Like there was a playground that was scheduled and...
So, to the actual drawing or to the plans?
To the plans.
So the board that's here, you know, we have a, we don't have a lot of room for the folks that work in town here that are here every day and do things to work. So this is really a workspace as well when we're not meeting here on, you know, Tuesday nights. The plans are still open for both of those. I may turn it over in the exact, the town administrator talked a little bit about the new combined town hall police station, which is in the architectural phase and bids will go out soon, you know, for that. The playground is a separate project that was funded by a grant. It was worked on by some folks in town and some community members for a number of years. It takes a while, but that's an all-inclusive playground that will incorporate and allow children with disabilities to also use some of the playground equipment, which is something we've been racking at any of the town parks. That, I believe, is the pad done for that?
The actual parking pad is complete. We're in the process of receiving bids back to level the site off for the equipment. And then in the process of putting together bids for the equipment that will be at the inclusive playground. Yes.
So both those projects are open?
So they're still forward going?
Yes. Correct.
Also, I was not really sure, Mr. Miller, you said something about a state park or a skate park?
It's a skate park.
S-K-A-T-E.
Yes, A-T-E. That is correct. Yes.
And that will be behind the pool?
In the general area behind Christmas Tree Park. Yes, ma'am. Currently, our skate park is located off of Route 27 on the north side of West Chester Square, if you're familiar with that. That area is going to become a stormwater management facility, so we have to relocate that skate park to the location off of Water Street, which is located behind Christmas Tree Park. Yes.
And is that where our children just skate?
Yes, they bring their skateboards in and also we allow BMX bikes, bicycles, to use the ramps also.
Oh, good.
Yes.
Sure. Anybody else? All right. We'll do our committee reports. Councilman Smith?
Our meeting has been rescheduled for May, so I'll have a report hopefully next meeting.
Okay. Councilman Blaith?
Planning and zoning didn't meet in March, but we're meeting next Tuesday, so everybody's welcome to come to that. And actually, I believe the concept plans for the park, I'm sorry, for the town hall will be introduced, so. When is that? Next Tuesday.
Next?
Yep. Seven-thirty.
Councilman Pacella?
I have nothing to report other than the next meeting is this Thursday, the sixteenth.
Spurgers or Dutch order? Excuse me, I'm sorry. Councilman Howe?
We had a meeting last night for the parks and we have some events that are coming up. April twenty-second will be a Ask a Master Gardener program from eleven to one on April twenty-second in the Postal Park. They will have seeds and information handouts free to give out. If anybody has a question about gardening, please show up. May the third is Spring Fest from twelve noon to four PM at Charlotte's Quest. And the Spring Fest is not only for children, but for adults. For the kids, they have reptiles and a moon bounce and pony rides, a petting zoo and a magician, and there's foods and crafts and there will also be a fifty-fifty drawing. So they, you know, it's for the whole family. May the eighteenth will be an archaeological dig at Charlotte's Quest from noon to four PM. And the gentleman does it, I'm not sure exactly where it'll be in the park, but anyone interested in, that would be welcome to come. And last, on May the thirty-first, there will be a plant swap from one to three PM at Charlotte's Quest. You can bring a plant, get another one. There'll be plant information and handouts and there will also be a mini garden workshop if anybody's interested. And there'll be like a white elephant table and who knows what else. So that's the activities that are coming up for the next two months.
Councilman Blaith?
Okay, Mayor Warner, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I know you attend, you regularly attend the North Carroll Council meetings. Has the subject of the joint use agreement come up in your meetings?
I'd say in conversation, not as a, as a bullet point. The last communication I have, I think that I've returned one with comments and then I had a conversation with Steve. I think what we're going to do while, while we hammer out those comments is extend the current one. So I had a conversation with Steve this week, so our goal was by the end of the week to get an extension of the previous agreement that would cover them while we work out terms of the new agreement.
My read is that the current agreement is still in effect. It was automatically renewed. We could take another look at that. So we do have something in place, but I know we were anxious to put something else new to modernize that, so we could just work that.
I think part of it with what we had talked about was rolling the new one forward, but naming the new locations that they also use.
Okay. Right.
And then there may be terms and conditions from the previous one that we wanted to update.
Okay.
So if we, if we did a, if we looked at the agreement and it did automatically roll over, it would be just an add-on to bridge over to the new agreement until the new agreement's put in place. Is that correct?
Right. Right. Yeah, and so we've had good conversations and I think that the current president and board are open to having, I mean, they recognize that circumstances have changed and fields have come on, you know, come into play. So, and even the way that they do business is different than it was, you know, eight years ago.
It clearly needs to be updated. Steve, when do we expect that baseball is going to be taking the program, taking the fields over now? I guess they go on, is it May first?
Could be. I know they're doing a lot of work up there right now. They're getting the infield's ready and they're, they're doing a great job.
They're coordinating everything through you guys, just make sure they're just done?
Yeah, we had, yeah. I mean, so I think, I was just checking with Chief Hess, opening day parade is Saturday, April twenty-fifth. So they're getting close, yes. And they're doing some good work.
They were working on it today.
Yeah.
My, my understanding is that baseball takes over March first? March first, technically, right? So I think that some years, they get out there, they start doing work. If the fields are suitable for practices and things, they start using them. So the goalposts were, are down. In fact, baseball, I think, helped with that. And I think that March was extremely wet month. There was snow, so I think they had a tournament they canceled, just from hearing them. I know that there's some dirt up there today. Steve sent an email to the baseball president who responded and said that it'd be moved tonight.
Right, correct. Yes.
So I think that games start pretty soon, but I think that they have been on the fields and doing improvements, putting dirt down and grass seed and that sort of thing.
And I'm not worried. The football and baseball programs have always taken good care of the fields, but sometimes get a little overzealous wanting to make changes. I just want to make sure that's coordinated through you and the town.
Correct. Yes.
Yeah, I think that there's, and I'm starting to bridge my way out of some of that involvement, but I think that there's more overlap between those two organizations than in any point in my ten-year memory. So there's four or five guys or families that are very instrumental in both programs now.
Is it for me?
Natalie?
I just have some upcoming events that are going on at our school in the next month. On April twenty-fourth, there's going to be a cocoa house. It's like going to be in the gym for elementary schoolers. It's like the battle of the books, so they're going to be doing trivia. There's supposed to be like four hundred elementary school kids involved. And then, just to reiterate what Dr. Fisher said, the Adams family is going to be put on by our drama department this weekend and next weekend. I believe showtime is seven o'clock. Okay?